I want to call to order the Seabrook City Council meeting of March 5th. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On the bond Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Item 1.1, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. For each speaker shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly in the microphone before making your comments. Charlene Gilbert.
Good evening. Charlene Gilbert, 2317, Bill Road. I'm here just to give some good words about the garden. I'm a volunteer at the garden. I'm also a volunteer for your local Seabrook El Lago Boy Scout troop, troop 95. I volunteered at the garden. I like gardening, but I mainly volunteered so that the Boy Scouts could have a place to work on their merit badge. There are several of them gardening in plant science, and there are several others having to do with nature. But the gardening merit badge is one of the rarest merit badges there are. And there's over 130 merit badges. To get eagle, you need 21 merit badges. And so, the gardening merit badge, it's difficult because you have to grow vegetables and flowers, both from seeds and from seedlings, in addition to the fact that you have to maintain either a beehive, hydroponic, worm farm, compost for 90 days. So it makes it very difficult, and many of the scouts, they don't have a place to do this. They definitely don't have a place for compost and worm farm and whatever. And we have that at the garden, and I oversee that. Sorry. Hopefully, I was loud enough, right? No, I'm running out of time. So, but, so, we have had several boys who are in this. They don't, they live in apartments, or they have a home, or maybe they rent, and they can't do the gardening there at home. And so, I provide the opportunity for them, and I work with them. This is one of the, as I know, the only place here in Clear Lake that has got a team partner with the Boy Scouts that allows them to do that. There are other gardens in this area, but there is not a merit badge counselor that's overseeing the opportunity for the boys. In addition to that, in addition to the merit badges, there have been eagle projects, and there have been Girl Scout silver project, and there are many more that's going to be available at the garden. So, I just want to let you know, it's not just fun and games. It is very serious. It's really important for these boys to get their merit badge, and it's also important that it is protected. I know some of you would like to have the gates open. If you think about how hard they work, and for somebody to vandalize or damage all the work that they have done, is really heartbreaking. So I just want you to, I want to plant that in your head. In addition to about leaving the gate open, safety is number one. And as a single woman, when I am at the garden, I cannot see who is coming in the gate. So often, and I'm not the only one, we lock the gate when we are inside. There is only one way out, and if we are trapped in there, it's very serious. So, many of us, we lock the gate just to be safe, so that we have an idea who's coming in. In addition to, we don't want any four-legged animals running through there. When it gets to be November, you're going to have the deer that cause a problem. So in addition to the safety point, and you're worried about excluding people, but the way that you exclude people is by making it inconvenient and unsafe. And not having a bathroom within closed locale is unsafe and inconvenient. If you are a parent and you have small children, especially if they're in diapers, trying to make that run to the restroom there at Pine Gully can be difficult. If you're like me, I have a bad knee, trying to make that run to Pine Gully can be cumbersome. We have older folks that have, oops, and I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Rhonda Thompson.
I live at 1601 Carefree Circle, Seabrook. I serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission and formerly chaired the city's task force, which developed a vision and plan for Carruthers Coastal Gardens, out of which was born the Carruthers Community Garden. And it's really the one viable thing that is attracting people to come to it. In fact, we had a group of Japanese tourists who stopped by and called Jesse and got in to see the gardens, and they were just amazed. So I know the potential exists for ecotourism at this location. Last fall, I joined the Board of Directors for the Carruthers Coastal Gardens 501(c)(3) that was legally formed in early 2022. It was served, it was formed basically to, because the organization needed a bank account. And they, you know, you had, in order to open a bank account, you have to have a legal organization. So that was its humble beginnings. But it has grown out of much more than just a bank account. We're starting our third year with the gardens and delivering on its mission in exciting ways, adding significant value to our community, and we're only getting started. This organization, I've worked with nonprofits for much of my career, and I see high potential in this organization. And it's got a very simple operating model. The mission is to promote the love of gardening and horticulture through our community garden and surrounding property, encourage community beautification, and enrich life through discovery, education, art, and the conservation of plants and the natural environment. At your last meeting, Jesse Jones, our founding board president and unpaid garden director, presented the council our 2023 garden report. I personally was inspired by that report. I was proud to be part of this organization. The new startup venture is already producing quite an impact in the community. Volunteer gardeners growing fresh food to donate through food banks, scout projects, as Charlene was talking about. I saw where there was just one this week. Tree and seed giveaways. There's a tree giveaway for Seabrook citizens in a couple of weeks. Please follow us at, on Facebook, the Carruthers Community Garden, and you will, you know, learn about many, very, with, complete with nice pictures, and it's just a feel-good, you know, to know what all is going on there. We also have seed giveaways, guided nature walks, and gardening classes, all for free. Good things are growing here, and there's so much more we plan to do for the Seabrook community, our band of volunteers. I think it would be helpful for you to know more about the Carruthers Board of Directors. This is, you see Jesse a lot, but it's not just Jesse. There are five board members. It's a working board, and we bring different types of expertise to this venture. Jesse has, serves as president. He brings considerable skill and passion to this project. I don't think anyone would deny that at all. As a local home builder, Jesse is a Texas Master Gardener and holds a Texas Nursery and Floral License. Most of all, he has, he has two things. He's very well-connected in this, in this field and in the community. And secondly, he's a natural connector. So because of that and his passion for the project, we have already gained an impressive start on partnerships and sponsorships and donations. I serve as vice president, and Samantha Conaway, you can hold her, you know, kind of wave a little bit, okay, serves as secretary treasurer. Samantha and I co-chair the fundraising and finance committee. I bring fundraising and nonprofit management experience. Samantha keeps us organized, and she also contributes marketing experience. She's also working on her Texas Master Naturalist Certification. Nemo Jackson is a CAD designer by day. He's also a Texas Master Gardener and chairs the garden committee and serves as a garden manager.
Rhonda Thompson.
Am I out of time? Okay. Let me just say that the board really wants to have a positive working relationship with the city, and we are looking forward to agreeing on this agreement and having your support because it'll help us do so much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Lane Porter.
Just going to put that up here as well, a little extra promotion. Good evening. My name is, yeah, bring it down. My name is Lane Porter. I live at 2418 San Sebastian Court, which happens to be in Lake City, but I am a Seabrook stingray at heart and have been for a very long time. I'm here today to talk about the Seabrook pool and how important it is to the Seabrook stingray swim team. I have been the president of the stingrays for the last three seasons, and I've been a member of the board for over 10 years at this point. I also started swimming for the stingrays when I was six years old in 1986, and swam all the way through, including high school, for Clear Creek High School, but swam all the way through till I was 18, and then became the head coach of the team for five years following that as well. So, my heart is definitely with them. As you all know, with respect to the pool, there's a lot of things going on. Kevin's been a great relationship for us and has worked with us for many, many, many years. And this is our 49th season. The team started in 1975, and we are a part of the Clear Creek Swim League, which has been existed, in existence since 1964. There are 19 teams total in the Clear Creek, Clear Lake area that are a part of the league. So, and the mission of the league is to support contributing to aquatic ability. It provides teamwork. They also want to promote principles of good sportsmanship and just advanced aquatic skills. And I think it's really critical to talk about how important this is, especially because we live in a coastal community, so the stronger your swimmers are, the better they are, and the safer your community is. So that said, we're a nonprofit. It's all completely volunteer-run, and we support about 125 swimmers from the Seabrook area, majority, a little bit from Kima, and then a little bit from Clear Lake Shores and San Leon area because they don't have teams in their area. But that said, the pool is critical to our success and going forward, so I'd love to get some support. I'd love to be put on the agenda for the March 19th meeting. Hopefully, the pool assessment will be back by then, so there'll be a lot more information on how to keep the pool going forward. But the bottom line is, this pool is critical to the success of the swim team going forward. We have pivoted for this season. I've spent many months trying to get a partnership with a new pool, and we've been successful. We'll be signing that, but it's a 15-minute drive for the members of this community to get their kids over there. We've had to change the times so that the kids and coaches still can get over there because kids walk to the pool and get there, or ride their bikes for the morning practices and afternoon practices that, that may conflict with some work schedules. So, that said, the pool is very, very important to us. We have a great relationship with the city of Seabrook and want to continue that and absolutely make it to our 50th season here in 2025. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm happy to bring a slideshow for the next meeting, if we could get on the agenda, and happy to provide additional information and answer questions and all that good stuff. I'm also happy to provide some additional ideas with how to help you guys maximize the benefits of the pool, which would be maybe some year-round options because there's, there are other teams. Well, we're just a summer league, and we just use it from May till the middle of July, and we're supporting that growth where the initial step, where the step beyond swim lessons. So then beyond that, kids start swimming year-round, and they take it into USA swimming and go even more competitive beyond that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. How do you pronounce this, Prey V?
Eric.
Okay.
I'm a Peritarian. I'm at 206 Whispering Oakstraw. I am representative here for Troop 140132, who happens to have taken over Bed 21 in the community garden. So I guess you can call me their gardening coordinator. I'm a true volunteer for them. And so the first thing I'm going to discuss a little bit is some Girl Scout safety, because I think there were some questions from the commissioner regards to how GSUSA handles that. Whenever activities are happening outside of a property owned by the Girl Scouts, there have to be two unrelated adults, one of which has to be female, at any type of event, activity, meeting, what have you. And those numbers change based on the age of the Girl Scouts. In order to be a volunteer, you have to be background-checked. You do have to also have a youth protection class, and also some basic CPR and first aid classes have to be taken. So whenever you guys see the Girl Scouts out there, you typically are going to see at least two adults, one of which is female, we're unrelated, so we're from different households. That way, we make sure everybody's protected. Let's see. Our girls are, my troop actually is a group of six freshman high school girls, and they are in the Seabrook community. They attend both Clear Lake High School and Clear Falls High School. They intend to grow this bed as a community donation bed for local food banks, and so they're growing kind of in correspondence with the other community beds. So how often do you guys actually see high school girls out gardening? Like, it doesn't happen anymore. So I have been very thankful that, I'm sorry, this is very, a very passionate cause for me because my kids grew up on a farm, and most kids here do not have that ability to grow something, watch it, tend it, harvest it, and be able to donate it to a local food bank. I don't know if you guys have had the ability to do that, but if you haven't, I highly suggest to try to get a bed because to see people be able to accept that food that they don't normally have is a big deal. So I think sometimes you guys might think that it's only about the people who lease the bed, or only about the volunteers, or the people who are in charge of the bed. And in reality, it goes much broader than that because you have people doing volunteer work, people donating food, people benefiting from seeds, people benefiting from learning to volunteer in their community. And these are high school girls doing that. So it's important that this community is available to those girls to do that. So that's all I'm going to say because I'm super emotional, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Is that Natalie Berry? No?
I'm Natalie Berry. I live on 2225 Waterway in Seabrook, Texas, and I've been living here for about almost 10 years. And before that, I lived in Germany for three years. Before that, I lived in, in the same area, in Seabrook, for about 12 years. So I'm very familiar with the local environment here, and I really enjoyed working at the Nature Center before I started working as a volunteer for Carruthers Coastal Garden. And the reason I want to share with you tonight is because I have great plans for the community to do more hikes and to have the community get to learn and know more about the local ecosystems, the plants, the animals that live here, in order for people to want to love them and protect them more. And I also want to lead activities with the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts at the beginning so that they will also use their skills to, to learn something more besides gardening. And so maybe hopefully in the future, they will become responsible citizens when they will have a job and more responsibilities in the community to, to make good decisions in the future. And so I want to support all our team of volunteers because we are all volunteers in this organization, so we dedicate our time and our passion for this project. We also have the project to create a garden, and I'm very proud of Jesse Jones, who is the leader in this matter, to create a wonderful garden that will be a great attraction in the future. So I'm also a certified teacher, and I have landscaping degree, so that I also want to work with some local schools like the Seabrook Intermediate School, the Science Magnet Program, as well as Clear Lake High School and the Bay Elementary School. With that being said, I think it would be a wonderful idea for me to present at the next meeting, a little slideshow, for you to see some of the projects that I have, to go more into details, and I would welcome any questions that you may have for me today or the next time. Otherwise, I just wanted to mention that my colleague Samantha is on the process to become a master, Texas Master Naturalist, which I'm also intended to become next year. So we are partnering with some of the local environmental organizations such as Urban Harvest and other organizations such as Gamblerstone Bay Foundation, the Ammon Bio Nature Center, and so on, so that we will be able to do some more activities and hopefully find also more grants and funding to, to help sponsor some of our activities. And I would like to thank everybody who came tonight. I also want to encourage everybody in our team who really don't have much time sometime to dedicate to this garden, but who, who really do a great job, especially the ones who are in charge of the garden, which takes a lot of time. Trust me. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. 2.0 presentations. I see Nathan here. Oh, I'm sorry. 1.1, mayor and city council and/or members of city staff may make announcements about city council events.
It's all that upcoming events and happenings coming up in the near future. Crafts with a cop, some cool decoration stuff for kids to do. That is Wednesday, March 13th. It is from 10 to 12. You may have heard a different time. It will actually be from 10 to 12 at Evelyn Mater Library. Seabrook Lucky Trails Marathon, Friday, March 15th to Saturday, the 17th, starting at Mater Park. Trash Bash is Saturday, March 23rd. Registration starts at 8:30 at Bay Elementary Parking Lot. We still need three chaperones to ride the buses back and forth to take people out where they need to be. If you're interested in doing that, willing to do that, please let us know. The Easter excursion will be Saturday, March 30th, from 9 to 11, again at Mater Park, always a good time. The Monroe Field Splash Pad finally opens Monday, April 1st, and the DF95 Regional Championship, Friday is April 19th to Sunday, the 21st. That's on Main Street. That's just always cool to watch. Is there anything I've missed?
Anybody else? Thanks, Rob. Presentations. Presentation of a quarterly update of the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. I don't see Nathan.
I don't either. Sorry. I don't have any messages for him.
We'll put him on the agenda for next, next meeting. 3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the February 20th, '24 meeting. 3.2, consider and take all appropriate action on resolution 2024-08, authorizing a grant application to the Harris County Precinct 2 Partnership 2024 program. 3.0, considering take all appropriate action on a second reading of ordinance 202404, a request to amend the Seabrook City Code of Ordinances by revising Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations, more specifically Section 18-121, Building Code Adoption. Section 18-122, same amendments. Section 10, Windstorm Standards. Section 18-123, One Family and Two Family Dwelling Code Adopted. Section 18-124, same amendments. Section 6, Wind Speed, by modifying the wind design standard from 150 miles an hour ultimate design wind speed to 150 miles per hour, the ultimate wind speed. 4.0, consider and take all appropriate action on a second reading of ordinance 202401, a request to amend the Code of Ordinances of the city of Seabrook, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 4, Special Use Regulation by creating a new section 4.27 entitled Portable On-Demand Storage Containers to establish associated regulations. 5.0, consider and take all appropriate action on a second reading of ordinance 202405, an amendment to the city Seabrook Code, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 3, Establish, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations. Section 3.02, RLD, Low Density Single Family Residential District. Section 3.03, R1, Single Family Detached Residential District. Section 3.04, R2, Single Family Detached Residential District, Small Lots. Section 3.05, R3, Medium Density Residential District. And Section 3.012, Old Seabrook District. By creating a new section entitled Outside Storage, establishing regulations concerning the outside placement of an item within the front yard of a residential use for a period of more than 72 hours during a 12-month period. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. 4.2, or 4.0, new business. 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on a recommendation by the Open Space Trails Committee for the addition of solar lighting at Mater Park to the city's capital improvement program under Parks- under Parks Projects with an estimated project cost of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Mayor and Council, this was a action item by the Open Space and Trails, uh, that they voted on as a recommendation. Uh, as you know, we have a city CIP project, uh, list sheet that's attached on here as well. And what the Parks Board is asking is that this project be moved on to your CIP. Uh, the estimated cost of seventy-seven thousand, um, is our best estimate at this point. And bear with me, I'll get to the attachment here.
Got a question. Okay, seventy-seven thousand is the initial cost. Is there any estimate on ongoing maintenance?
We do not have those numbers at this time, no.
Okay, what, the other thing is, I'm, as to what drove this, because I, I don't remember, I mean, I can't recall anybody coming forward wanting to have, um, Mater Park lit up at night.
So with open space, we've, we've let them know that, um, as recommending body, if they wanna come up with, uh, just like the public, if they wanna come up with capital projects, um, they're, it's certainly their opportunity to do that. So we've kind of instructed them from the staff side that this is an opportunity for them. The decision lies with council if they wanna move that on to their capital program.
Okay. I mean, I, i- i- if the community wants it, I really got a problem with it. My concern is that, I know at Seascape, we have a tennis court and basketball court out there that at one time was lit, but due to some bad actors, we had to turn the, the lights off and it's just, you know, sunup to sundown, and that's, that's gonna be it. So I'm curious, did, did, was there any kind of, um, any kind of look at the, the surrounding neighbors? Uh, was there a poll taken to see what their input would be?
Not to my knowledge, no. I think this was just board action.
Was there a rationale, reasoning for the, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, do we have a bunch of midnight walkers out there? That we know of?
We don't. I mean, if that's a poll or some survey we need to take, um, outside of what your recommending body has given to you, we can certainly do that from staff.
Where is some money gonna come from?
So right now, uh, if council were to elect to move this to your CIP, we do not have, uh, sufficient funds in our capital. Uh, it would need to be a, probably a to-be deter, determined, um, looking for grant or if council wanted to pull this out of savings and some future date, um, this would be all up to council.
Well, I, I would just suggest that we get a little bit more information, especially about the interest in this, because we also have some new communities on the west side and only one park. And if you go to Brummerhoff Park, there's that big field behind the splash pad. And with the new subdivision going in and new people over there, um, we may wanna look at, you know, our money over there as opposed to having it lit up at night, but that's just my thinking.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I agree with Buddy a little bit there too as well, and I think it was just thrown on us, and so I think we need to do some more evaluating and find out. Because the other thing I'd think about is, first of all, like you said, Buddy, is how many people use it at night? Second of all, vandalism. What kind of equipment is that? Is it gonna get vandalized? And are my guys, not my guys, uh, department's gonna take care of it, and how much is that gonna cost? Um, and again, we didn't have it on our CIP. We, they had plenty of time to add it last year. I think if, I'm not saying I'm not for it, but we should maybe look for it to next year.
Well, and a- again, we, we've instructed from the staff side for the board, if they're interested, just like when we turn out social media posts for public projects, um, this is just a recommendation.
Okay.
And much like other projects, if it's agreed upon to move it, uh, funding is not necessarily required. We would just have to look at some future date for either those grants or savings.
My two cents.
There's, there's a lot of things on our CIP list that, uh, that go unfunded every year. I like the idea of doing this. I do remember a couple of years ago, we talked about doing solar lighting at Friendship Park. And that got turned down when the local neighborhood came out in force arguing against it because they didn't want everything lit up right in their backyard. I am a little bit concerned about that here, but, uh, this is to place it on the CIP program, not to fund it and get to work. Uh, I would not object to placing it on the CIP program because every year, we have to look at those, decide what we need to do with them, instead of jumping through hoops to answer these completely valid questions. Uh, I'd support putting it on the CIP program at this time. And that buys us time and forces us to come back and review it at an appropriate time when we might be able to get funding.
Is there any way this project could be done in-house?
I believe the quote is, uh, the solar are nice solar lights that would have to be installed, so I don't think there would be, I mean, we saw the equipment that we have to purchase. And I would assume we wanna have professional installation of those, so I'm not sure which savings. Have to dive back into the quote, but, I mean, it's, it's the poles, the lights themselves, the solar panels that's driving the cost.
Anyone else? Anybody wanna make a recommendation as to what we do?
I move to place solar lighting at Mater Park on the CIP program, uh, with the intent to review in twenty-twenty-five CIP cycle as we get to that point.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Before we, uh, we go into five point O, I would like to call an executive session to discuss with the attorneys some legal issues. Under section five fifty-one, we are in executive session six thirty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you see it go over, Rob? I don't think this is, I, I don't think it's, they're still around.
I got a picture. I have that picture of Andrew sitting in your lap. He's good. He's still in the city. He's doing, I think he's still adjusting, honestly. Um, but they're rotating shifts now. But rotate six, every six months. They brought over, uh, whichever county. You know, I don't like people wanna be on the ice between, you know, or something else.
Extra ice.
I think we'll get to the point, but as of right now. Or in the community areas, like behind parks and things. Two in the town. He has it. Yep. I get here twenty-three days every day. Then you're gonna start putting somebody out there on the road.
Thanks. So the new system? They have a new system.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah. It's like. I remember when they.
I'll be, I'll be.
It wasn't a joke after. Like I said, the house. Yeah. Please don't hurt any kids. But they all have good legs.
Okay.
Oh, really? See, I.
Yeah. That was, that would never happen again. That was the shortest one.
So they're actually, like, my kids. He's a balance. He's, he's just long. And he, but they stay so curled up. Yeah, she loves it. They stay. He likes to spend like more places, so they just like to like snuggle up. So like, I guess I could just relax. They like to get.
The council has adjourned our executive session. No actual mistake. Five point O, whole business. Point one, discuss, consider and take all appropriate action on establishing a new annual amount in the, in the city's budget for Carruthers Community Garden Project from the fiscal year twenty-two-four general fund, including, this is an item within the operating and management agreement between the City of Seabrook and five oh-one-three-C Carruthers Coastal Gardens in consideration of its uses. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Um, may we discuss, uh, I don't know if this is an option, but can we discuss five point one through five point six, each item before we vote on them? Is that possible? Because there's, they kind of all connect and you might want, make one decision based, you know?
Well, I can't, I can't go back on this one first. We have, I can read it, I can, we can go next.
I'm sorry.
I've already read this one.
Tom.
Go.
Some of these are more contentious than others. Any progress that we make going forward is a good thing. I would suggest we take them one at a time and get as many off the table as we can. Make sense?
Okay.
In that case, I move to approve item five point one, establishing an annual amount in the city's budget for the Carruthers Community Garden as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we discuss the amount?
Discussion, discussing your budget.
Yeah, the amount.
Yeah.
I would like to propose. I would like to propose anywhere from one to five thousand as an annual support from the city that we support this project.
You want to change your motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I do think we need to incorporate the amount as part of the motion. I mean.
In the motion?
Yes, so.
In that case, appropriate for me to amend my motion at this time?
Absolutely.
Then I will amend my motion to approve item five point one, establish an annual amount not to exceed five thousand dollars in the city's budget for Carruthers Community Garden Project as written.
Second.
Okay, now I'm getting a little bit confused because this says Carruthers Coastal Gardens.
Yeah, wait a minute. You're right.
Oh, that's just the name of the 501(c)(3) is Carruthers Coastal Gardens. They manage Carruthers Community Gardens as well. And this would be money allocated specifically to Carruthers Coastal Gardens of 501(c)(3) for use at Carruthers Community Gardens.
I agree with that, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. We have an amended motion. Do I hear a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Tom. The. I don't have a concern with supporting the garden. It is something we have to do, but there has to be terms and limits to it. If we approve five thousand dollars in the city's annual budget to support Carruthers Community Gardens, then that's what it is. Requests for support that exceed five thousand dollars or those, those can't be approved because we're approving a budget for a specific entity for the year. Uh, budget change requests have to come back here to council and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the community garden. If we approve this and then you come back and say, you know what? This year we need six thousand. Uh, no, it's five. Uh, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of the constraints of approving this as it's currently written.
Another question.
Buddy.
Okay, um, you know, when we started this whole thing back in 2021, Mr. Jones came before council and was presenting the idea for community gardens. And at that time, it was that it would become self-sufficient. It was going to be a one-time investment by the city. And, uh, to that end, I very much supported it. Uh, that and also the, the number of people that Mr. Jones presented that were interested in, in the guarding aspect of it. And so here we are two years later and the self-sufficiency is gone. But I'd like to bring back in five eighteen of twenty-three, an email from Mr. Jones. He requested an emergency grant. Quote, "To that end, Coastal Carruthers, uh, Carruthers Coastal Gardens 501(c)(3) is requesting twenty-five hundred dollars in emergency funding immediately and continuing budget item the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per year for continued maintenance and upkeep." That was in five eighteen twenty-three. But then in August, I got another email from Mr. Jones. It says, "We are slowly on the road to self-sufficiency and therefore will not be needing the twenty-five hundred dollars previously requested by the city." My point is this. Let's get all the cards on the table. You've got six things or five things listed here, all cost money. We have a city budget. We just can't keep adding and subtracting and expect to have a solid and solvent financial situation. And the other thing is, back in November, the citizens of Seabrook sent a message saying they don't want to spend money moving our PD out of a known flood zone. So what are we gonna tell our citizens? That, because we're talking about a whole number of things in here that gets into tens of thousands of dollars. So that's my concern. And, and instead of piecemealing this thing, to go back to the table, because the 501(c)(3) wasn't existing. We had the Carruthers Community Gardens Volunteer Group starting off. It was a one-time expenditure. And now, and it was just for the gardens. And now we heard it tonight. And I'm not saying it's bad. Shoot, I was a Boy Scout. I was an Eagle Scout. I had all that. I understand that. But let's figure it all out and not just have this expense, an undefined expense going forward.
Anybody else? You know, and, and, and I'm the same, kind of the same. I, you know, I've supported this. I think it's a great idea. I'm continuing wanting to support this, but there. But again, I was under the understanding when we first went into this that, you know, we were, that City of Seabrook was allowing you use of the land. Uh, we put up a forty-one thousand dollar seed money to get the garden started. And I thought it was going to be self-sufficient also. As a matter of fact, I, I know it was supposed to be self-sufficient. And, and, you know, now we're going into quite a bit of additional expenditures. Uh, restroom facilities and, and wifi wiring and moving a fence. And we're going, you know, it, it was, I was always supportive of this project. It's, uh, and I am today. It's just that when is the self-supporting gonna kick in? Because, you know, the city, um, can't keep throwing money at this project. It, it's a great volunteer effort and, and I've seen volunteers all the time out there. But, but I guess there comes a time when we have to say it's, you know, we can't keep, keep up the budget. Uh, we don't even know what the budget is. And I don't have a problem of, of putting five thousand dollars or, or you name the number, uh, into, into this as an annual budget for operations. But, you know, there comes a point where we just have to say, well, here's the budget and let's live within it, uh, instead of adding all this other, other stuff. So, um, you know, that's my, uh, just my opinion. We have two motions on the table. Uh, Joe.
So I'm, I'm really a big supporter of this. I liked the project from the beginning since we lost the house and all that kind of thing. Um, nothing you could do, but you guys came up with this plan. I really liked the plan. I've been behind it the whole time. Um, you know, the fence was just brought up. The fence was put in the wrong place in the first place, so it's fifteen feet off of the actual property line. For some reason, down there, we have this issue of putting a fence not on a property line. I don't get it. I never will get it. It's the craziest thing in the world. It's a hundred and thirty feet long, fifteen feet off. That comes up to one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet that we are wasting. No idea why. Just, you know, crazy stuff to me. But anyway, that's why a fence keeps coming back up. The other thing is, yeah, you're gonna have expenses. And one of the things that I think will start in the future is when they have their greenhouse, they're gonna plant plants out there. They're gonna plant trees. Those trees are gonna grow and then those trees are gonna be used to be planted around Seabrook Parks. There's one. Two, they're gonna plant annuals or perennials. I'm not a plant guy. I just kind of heard them, these two names before and I think they're cool, so I'm gonna say them. But, um, you, they'll grow those and then they'll go out to the Bay Area Veterans Memorial and they'll be red, white, and blue. And you'll have red, white, and blue in there. So that'll be cool. We could do it at these other entrances. And Friday, my eyes were lit wide open at that EDC meeting where that lady said, "You need to have your entrances of your city something to be proud of," which right now they're not, which in the future they could be with these plants that you guys do. So that'd be a big thing. And that's going to take some money in the beginning to do that. And then the other part is, then I think it will become more self-sufficient or whatever, you know, and pay kind of for itself. But, you know, it's gonna take time to get there and I have no problem. And I think we should, uh, push for the five thousand annually, because it could change and go down in the future.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, I mean, I know we haven't gotten into them yet, but I think there's a lot of other additional, some of this expense can be, um, we, the funding can be from the insurance money. Um, and I want to talk about the bathrooms be- because I, I mean, but we're not there yet, but, um, that's why I was asking to kind of go over everything before we made decisions. But I do think the five, I, I ran that number by Jesse. I think an annual budget would be helpful. Again, just to show that we support. I mean, they are gonna get funding from other places. We, you know, he's proven that and he's, they have, you know, uh, people in line for that. So I think just getting them to a safe property and getting some guidelines, maybe we can move forward tonight and, uh, put this behind us.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion? Well, we have two motions. Uh, first we'll vote on the second motion, right?
The amended.
The amended motion. Okay, all, all in favor of?
Say. Just say the amended motion.
The amended motion.
It's the two. The amount not to.
It was the one, it was the motion that had the five thousand dollars.
To restate the amended motion, uh, I move to approve item five point one to establish a new annual amount in the city budget for, uh, Carruthers Community Garden in amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Would that be starting immediately? Out of savings?
We, we have to find the money first, but.
Okay. It would be a budget amendment?
It would be, it would.
It would have to be.
It would have to be a budget amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, just clarity.
I'll second that. No, it was already seconded.
So i- if this passes, then is, does that automatically amend the budget?
No.
It does not. She, we will bring that back at the next.
No, we'll have to just come back.
And just for clarity, so this would be a sponsor, a, a check written to the 501 if that's put into an agreement?
Okay, I have a question for council then. What if we never have an agreement with the 501(c)(3)?
Well, we would, we, we would have to memorialize this.
Huh?
We would have to memorialize the five thousand dollars. And when we come back next meeting with a budget amendment, it, we'd have to have something, regardless of what y'all decide to do with the other agreement. Otherwise, we, if you decide to move forward with any kind of a, an agreement, a contractual relationship with them, uh, with the understanding of what we talked about in executive session, um, we could reduce, you know, we could incorporate that as part of that agreement. But if y'all decide not to move forward with that, then we'll, we'll put some kind of a memorandum of understanding or something together so that it's, it's clear what the five thousand dollars is for.
Okay.
And how it's distributed?
I'm sorry.
And how it's distributed or?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the amended motion? Raise your hands. All opposed? Now, um, we need to vote on the original.
Yes.
Motion. All in favor of the original motion?
That's to approve it.
That's to approve.
The amendment was just for the up to five thousand.
Right.
The original motion is to approve it.
Approve, approve the, approve the motion to funding.
We wrote it the right way.
It's a, it's a motion to approve funding. The second one was for value. So all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Item two point O, discuss, consider, and take all appropriate action on expanding the Carruthers Community Garden to include the use of 502 Pine Gully, the Carruthers Guest House, insur- insurance TML number one eighteen property and contacts. Consider, consideration of including this as an item, as an item within the operating maintenance agreement between the City of Seabrook and the 501(c)(3) Carruthers Coastal Gardens for covered property and contents in, in consideration of its uses, days, and times for the volunteers and the public and any expenditures for bringing the structure to code. Do I hear a motion?
Uh, Mayor, oh, can I, uh, this is, this got put on here because I was asking about the casita use basically, which would be one of those, uh, is that correct? This was for the use of the, they're calling, the casita, the Carruthers Guest House. That's really what this is talking about. Um, and like some of the, um, residents here tonight has discussed that Pine Gully Park is far there for restrooms. Um, the casita has an operating restroom right now. It's a, it's a tiny little house. If y'all haven't been out there with a little kitchen and, you know, it has a step down um, to the bathroom. From my understanding, I, I can't see it, but I haven't seen it, but I could see the kitchen does step down as well. Um, Gail says that it should be ADA compliant because it's open to the general public, but this will not be open to the general public. This will not be just anybody can come in. This will be under a contract with, uh, or proposed to be under contract with Carruthers to, for the volunteer head people to open that and be responsible for the cleaning and the secure, security of it or securing the building. Um, they can allow seniors that come in that can't make it to the, the restroom, you know, in Pine Gully or when Pine Gully Park closes and the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are meeting in the evenings, they don't have to go find a spot in the woods, uh, which is what they're currently doing. Um, and also there's, air conditioner is running in this, uh, building twenty-four seven and nobody's using it. And that, that just seems like a waste to me. Um, at least let the guys go cool off, you know, in the summer. Um, I could even see this in the future being used, um, for, for photographers when they want to go out and they need to change clothes and, you know, when, when the gardens or the coastal gardens are all done. But, um, I don't know that the, the depth of what needs to happen to make it ADA compliant if that, if it's just a ramp and a handrail, then I'm all for it. But if it's a major remodeling, I'm not gonna, I don't support, you know, that cost. I'm not gonna, I don't support, you know, that cost. Gail told me that the reason why she had to have it ADA compliant is because it used to be used as the bridal building, because it was under a contract agreement, which again, I think that this would also be in a contract agreement, not open to the general public.
Mike?
I just have a little concern. Again, we got rid of Carruthers Coastal Gardens facility for a reason, and here we are trying to open it all back up again, and I understand that, that's, it's there, like you said, but again, to get it to code, like Gail was saying, I think it's going to be a lot more expensive than you think. And I think that's my concern, where again, we're getting like, like Buddy just said, we're going to use a lot more money to try to get this thing back up again, and I understand it doesn't have to be ADA compliance, but it, it somewhat does because all different kinds of people are still using it, is what I understand. So, I think it's going to be a lot more expensive than we look, than we're reading into.
Joe?
Well, if the bridal people could use it, why can't Carruthers? That's the way I look at it. And the way I also look at it is, the city was given this park, but it, then it took a, a bond to be able to buy it, even though like part of it was given, but it needed a bond. Well, the people spoke. I don't care if it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago. The people spoke and said they wanted it, so you gotta fix it, or you gotta take care of it. Kind of like the Bay Area Veterans Memorial. The land was given to a guy to build it. He built it, gave it back to the city. You gotta maintain it. If you didn't want it, you said, "No, I'm not going to do that," but you said, "Yes," so you get to maintain it. And yeah, it does cost money, but in the end, it brings in a heck of a lot more than it costs because you're going to get people, and all these people here are already using it, and they're Boy Scouts, and then it's getting spread around, and you go on these Next Door and all these other things. People are definitely talking about it, so we can make it a really good thing, or we can make it a negative thing.
Buddy?
In our discussions regarding the insurance proceeds and where it can be spent, it has to be spent for capital improvements. The task force recommended, or has a recommendation, this become bathrooms and a rest place for people touring the gardens, which I can understand because it's the other end of the world from where the ones are in Pine Gully. But then, in Mr. Jones's budget that presented to council an email, called for it to be turned into a resident for a garden manager where the person would live free of charge. And I, I would think we'd want to include open spaces and trails in this discussion because it could get real expensive because you're talking about a resident. You could say, "Oh, it's just a single, you know, a one-bedroom apartment," but if we get a garden manager that's got a family, he's probably going to want a three-bedroom, or she may want a three-bedroom, two-bath house. That's significant. Plus the fact, we haven't even gotten the PaaS in, and that's going to come out of the insurance money. So before we do this, I would suggest that let's table it until we get the PaaS in and see where we are, because we also have to get our plants in and see what's left over for this and what we're going to do with it.
Well, they also have portable ADA compliant porta-potties. They use them out at Ellington for the World War II veterans, and they can get in and out of them, so that's at least another option.
Tom? I would have a hard time supporting this without knowing the cost of getting it to code, the, the final ruling on the ADA compliance component, and a resolution on a couple of other things that are coming up later on.
Well, whether or not we're required by code to make it ADA compliant is the fact that you are, you're just going to not, you know, allow or, or make accommodations for a Girl Scout or Boy Scout that's handicapped, or a resident's a handicap? I mean, they see somebody else using the restroom and you're going, "Now, I gotta go to the other end of the world to use it." I mean, that, that seemed to be silly, and I don't think I could vote for that either. It's going to have to be ADA compliant. Whether or not the code regulates that it's needed, I think convenience and, and, you know, general needs to be compliant. Anyway, that's just my opinion. I think we can do some more researches to that. Making it ADA compliant will take a little bit of work and a little, a lot of money. So, that's, that's just my opinion, I guess. Any other, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to table this and so we get further information about the cost of making the bathroom compliant.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. 3.0, consider and take all appropriate action on expanding the Carruthers Community Garden project area to include the entire use of 502A Pine Gully, the Yellow Parks Building, insurance TML 20231, property and contents. Considering and including this as an item within operating maintenance agreement between the City of Seabrook and 501(c)(3) Carruthers Coastal Gardens, and consideration of insurance coverage for contents and any limitations to city coverage requirements.
Okay, this is also on here, listed separately because it's basically talking about this small two-car garage. And I did provide y'all pictures. If y'all haven't been out there recently, there's a two-car garage that they really have no, cannot access because there's like 10 pelicans in there that are 15, 20 years old, most of them. They've been outside all these, all this time, and now suddenly they need to be inside. And then they were asked to keep the other bay open so an artist can come work on it if need be. This, this space right here would allow them to lock up all of their expensive tools and equipment, which is also get out of the way for safety issues as well, but also for vandalism or theft. I don't see any reason why these need to be stored there, and I don't, I don't see why we can't move these to Public Works where there's lots of space. But basically, that's what, what 5.3 is about, is using, the use of the garage and getting rid of the pelicans out of there.
Question. When you're saying consideration of insurance coverage for contents and limitations, what do you?
Well, I'm not sure why it's, it's all up, can you explain on the insurance?
Sure, so because it's a city property, the city is covering the property for liability and contents on that building, so we have property coverage on the building, what we had in the building at the time. So we'll have to determine with operations agreement, I guess we'll continue to pay for coverage content per the operations agreement, or need some direction on that one.
Can we just cover structure?
Well, we'll have to because it's ours. We're basically, you know, leasing it for nothing, but I, I think the bigger discussion is, you know, what goes in there? Does council want to insure that?
Well, if we take all the contents out of it, I'm not sure what we'd be insuring.
I think there was some expensive equipment going in.
I mean, it's, it's the 501(c)(3)'s equipment, and it's their responsibility. We have no oversight for what goes in there, how it's stored, if it's stored properly or improperly, so. And then, and we've had this conversation, Mr. Jones and I've had it, about what's yours is yours, what's mine's mine. So it would, my way of thinking would be that anything that's in there, they're going to cover it with their insurance. It'd be just like an apartment. We'll take care of the building. However, you know, if somebody drives a tank through, one of your volunteers drives a tank through it, that's going to come on your nickel too.
It actually is currently covered under our...
It's a, there's the two-car garage storage area there. There's a small office space where the, the plants are being sprouted and that kind of stuff, a small office room there that they have current access to. I'm unclear on the security concerns needing to lock garden tools primarily inside that garage, if we're also locking the exterior gate. It's hard to imagine someone being desperate and creative enough to climb a fence so they could come in and steal shovels and hoes and take them down and pawn them. If, if we're going to have full access to it, open all the time, absolutely, this is something we need to consider. But if it's limited access where you have to call to get in, the way it is now, and I'm not arguing about the way it is now, I'm just saying, what's the need for storage if we've already secured the area?
Okay, so, yeah, I like the idea of getting the pelicans out of there. I like the idea of getting the gators that were there before, the, you know, four-wheelers out. If the garden's going to use that area, let the garden use the area. And I don't think we, as city council, should say that there's going to be shovels or hoes or rakes or rice holes, because I've brought a lot of rice holes. They need to stay dry, so they could go in that garage and they stay dry. A lot of people don't know what you would need rice holes for, but it's a weed deterrent, and it actually helps grow the plants. But it needs to stay dry, and I bring it in, you know, 50-gallon trash bags, and it needs to stay dry. So out underneath the awning, it's getting moist from the humidity. In there, it'd be a lot less. But let them decide what it is. If they're insuring it and they're going to put their stuff in there, let them figure that out. And I'm just for get all that stuff out that the city has and let them use it as they need.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on?
Just a quick question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Mike.
Kevin, do you have space to put these pelicans? I don't know how many. We're talking?
Ten.
Is that a fair question? Can I ask him?
There's 10.
No.
Kevin?
I just, you know, because that's still city property, and we want to take advantage of it as well if we need space.
Assuming, there's maybe 10 or 12. Assuming you mean Public Works storage and outdoors, we can find room for them outdoors. Currently, they're indoors. That was something that LeAnn wanted. Be really a decision that maybe her department and Amanda could let us know if she still felt...
I mean, prefer covered, I think, because they're going to get worse if we put them outside, so I mean, that's why they're in where they're at, so.
Well, what are we doing with them? Are they being restored at this point?
There's some that needs repairs. They've been abandoned. The original intent was to have the artist have a covered semi-air-conditioned place she could come in, repaint them, they'd be go back over to seal it, and then come to the retirement garden over here.
So they are abandoned?
I believe some of them are abandoned, yes.
So, well, I don't, we can go into this later, but I think we ought to have, we ought to have some type of program where people can adopt them as long as they...
I was going to say, that's my next question, because I wouldn't mind adopting one and putting it in my backyard. I mean, that's perfect.
Well, it'd have to be public.
Right now, you're...
Oh, to public display. Well, my, you know, my pool would be, I guess.
The police chief told me he wanted him in his storage room for all the stolen items.
Oh, sure he did.
Evidence room?
Sure he did. Found his desk.
But again, I mean, I think if, I think if they've been sitting there for a couple of years, I agree, they're probably going to get worse. But, but, you know, maybe adoption with the, with the premise that the person is going to restore it, or something like that.
Yeah, just as a recap, you guys have approved $10,000 via the hot fund budget, so as much as $10,000 goes to rehab those, we take it as far as we can each year.
We have one, we have... We have one artist, right?
It's more than one.
We have one artist working on them?
It depends. Some of them have things that are, have been...
Okay, I think we're getting, we're getting off the agenda item, I'm sorry. But I think there's something to do. Go ahead.
You know what? The pelicans are outside devices. They can be moved out and lined up against a fence out there and not get in the way of anything. The other stuff that is in there, which I was in that garage last weekend, and I don't remember what was on the right side of the garage or on the shelf up top, that, I know it was full, I just didn't really pay close attention to what it was. Being able to move all the stuff that's in there into some other location, but again, if the gate's already locked, what are we storing in there? What, that has to be secured or double-secured by two different locks.
Well, I, I question, does that make a difference? What's one more lock? If we're going to talk security, and the city's got all of their stuff out of there, then I don't care if you put a padlock on it.
Just as a question, okay, the storage would be utilized 100% for the community gardens, correct?
Okay. I don't have a motion for this one. There's no motion?
Motion to approve 5.2 with taking the contents wording out for the insurance.
Second. Say that again, Jackie, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve 5.2, but eliminating the coverage for the contents and the insurance.
We on 5.3? Yeah, we're on 5.3. Not 5.2.
So sorry, 5.3, motion to approve 5.3, excluding the contents coverage of the insurance.
Second. Okay, I think we should have something in there about the city removing their equipment. I can't make a motion. Can somebody make a motion?
Can I amend my motion?
Yes, nobody seconded it yet.
Yeah, no, there was a second.
Okay, I'd like to amend 5.3 to approve, to approve this with, with taking the insurance contents out and removing the pelicans to another place.
Second. Just the pelicans we're going to take out?
I mean, there's, the only, it's the pelicans there. I mean, other than that, I mean, they had some fridges and, I mean, but that was, that's the, they're using those.
There was a second. So you can go up one more amendment to clarify.
I don't think it's necessary. I think you proceed with the motion as presented.
You can also, you can also withdraw your amended motion.
It's my understanding the amended motion is to approve the item without city providing insurance for the contents within the building and removing the pelicans and any other stuff that's in there.
So did you make that motion?
That's what he said.
Somebody, somebody say ditto and we'll vote on it.
Ditto.
Will I get a second? Yes, I seconded. Okay. All in favor of the second amended motion, raise your hands. All opposed? Good, passes unanimously. Do I hear, all in favor of the, no, the second amended? Okay, of the, of the, of the original motion. All in favor?
The original motion?
The original motion to, is to approve using, allowing them to use it. The other emotions were to clarify what they had to do. So all in favor? Okay. 5.4, discuss, consider, and take all appropriate action on replacing a section of wood fence with chain-link fence at 502 Pine Gully, 502A Pine Gully within the Community Garden project and consider source of funding.
Okay, this is also the pictures. You can see there is a 130-foot piece, section of the wood fence that's still up. The new chain-link fence was, was installed on the rest of the perimeter, but was cut short at the property line, and I don't know, just went one direction for, I don't know, 20 feet. You can see from the pictures, the wood fence is literally standing up by the vines, which is obviously not safe. I don't think it's, I think this would probably cost a couple thousand dollars, I mean, to be honest. And this is out of the, I believe we can use this out of the insurance, right? Or no?
That's an existing fence, it'd be maintenance.
Okay, well...
Well, just as a recap, council, your $41,000 came out of general fund because we didn't deem that this was an improvement to the bond language, so I would suggest that we take this out of your general fund savings as well.
Okay, and also I want to just talk about the property line. I was told that the reasoning that they needed it to be over so far was because to get the mowers in, but they're not mowing up to the fence. It is literally a huge brush pile of weeds.
They wouldn't be mowing. It's a ditch, it's open ditch, so what they need to get out there to clean out, they would need to get a backhoe over there, so that was the reason.
Okay, they could still get a backhoe on the inside of the fence if it was, I mean, we're losing thousands of square feet of property.
Well... Let me hear from Kevin.
So a little history on the fence. It was pre-existing at the time, it's been several years, a few years now. It was deemed good enough condition to, to allow to stay. Some of the chain-link fence went beyond that fence to tie into it, and it allowed for a new gate to be installed at the front. So that fence wasn't relocated. That fence was at that point historically. If we want to be able to maintain that ditch line by either mowing it, cleaning it, demucking it, things like that, we're, it's a little easier for us to go from that side. Not to say that we can't do it from the inside, we just have to be able to have access with equipment to get in there and do the same function to be able to clean it. Another option is to fill it, so bring in pipe, bring in fill, and provide the cost for that, but just throwing them all out there so everybody can understand all the options.
What do you mean, fill it? Like fill it like no ditch?
Right.
But we need the drainage.
Put a drain pipe in.
Oh, gotcha, 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 sorry.
So we, we'd have to do some research on that to make sure we're not reducing capacities within the ditch, things like that, but if we want to just go back to relocating the fence the other side, we just want to make sure we have access to that at all times, so...
Go ahead.
The, the location of the fence is, my opinion, kind of a sidebar. It is not negatively affecting how Community Gardens functions right now. I looked at it, I didn't look at it closely. It is not in good shape. I would suggest that the city, Kevin, make the decision on if and when that fence needs to be replaced. When that time comes, then the decision on exactly where to place it. But if it was there when the property was purchased, I'm not going to argue about where it is right now, and the debate over the amount of space lost between there and the property line is distracting us from what we're trying to do, is just to make sure that fence is safe and that the garden area is secured.
Question, oh, well, my question, Kevin, we know you didn't put the fence there. My big deal is, the fence is old and dilapidated, needs to be replaced. That's foregone conclusion. The other one is, I don't understand, if you own personal property, and I own personal property adjacent to you, we put the fence right on the property line. I would never put it on your side, and you wouldn't put it on my side. I don't get it. Now, I understand you guys can work on it from the outside, but if you can work it on from the inside, I would never give up property, ever in my life. I would not give up one square inch of property, and the city needs to look at it that way. The people, it's the people's land. You don't give it up and just, "Well, you know, this 1,950 square feet is just useless. I mean, they can clean it, but that's all..." 1,950 square feet is just useless, I mean, they can clean it, but that's all we can do with it, so I just would never do that.
Well, the property pin locations don't, don't change, the property pin locations are still what they are, the survey doesn't change, it's still the same, the properties, there's no lost property there. What we would prefer to have the fence where it is, is for the maintenance of that open ditch. If we're to move the fence to the backside of the open ditch, you have an open ditch inside the property, I'm not really sure how that's gaining.
Mayor, may I chime in here?
Yes.
So we're talking about a, a public right-of-way, it's a drainage ditch, it's no different than driving down any other street that has open ditches on both sides. We would not permit some, a, a private citizen to enclose a public drainage ditch by fence. So the fence location is, is proper?
No, it's not, because they put the ditch there, and someone put the ditch in the wrong place, is what they did.
It's my understanding that this ditch is a, is public property, is part of a public drainage right-of-way.
I think we should talk to the Carruthers and tell them to move.
And, well, if y'all would like me to take a look and see if there's an actual easement associated with this drainage ditch, or if it's part of the overall adjacent right-of-way, then we can take a look at it, but, I mean, it would be very unusual to enclose a public ditch inside a private fence, whether it's private property, this is a park, but just using your same analogy. So, we'll be happy to take a look at it, but my first impression looking at this is that the fence is, is where it needs to be, you would not put a fence on the other, between a right-of-way and a, a drainage right-of-way.
And I, I really don't think we'd be gaining much, move the fence, because you're still gonna have to reserve that much inside, if you have the drainage ditch inside the fence, you're gonna have to reserve space so the equipment can get in there to, to maintain it, so you're not gonna really gain that much, if, if any, you might even lose some.
Well, the, 5.4 says to consider source of funding. That number one bothers me, we need to know a number, or I need to know a number, and I need to know where that number's coming from. Again, I don't think it's a huge amount, but again, there's another amount, so we need to, we need to have a source, and we need to have a, a budget number for this fence.
Why don't we, why don't we get a quote, and then it's, my understanding it'll be coming out of the general fund, and then we can vote yea or nay.
Motion to table this, 5.4, until we get fun, estimate for the 130 feet of wood fence that's replaced with chain link.
Well, it's not wood fence, they want a chain link fence.
Yeah, yeah, of the wood fence section, to chain.
My second motion to table.
And Mayor and Council's part of that tabling, we will ensure at the staff level that it is actually part of a public right-of-way and that the location of the fence is proper.
All in favor, we got a motion and second, all in favor, tabling? Thank you. 5.0, discuss, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval and cost of installation of new fiber internet directly to 502A Pine Gully, the Yellow Parks Building, insurance TML number 231 for Carruthers Community Garden Project for 5013C. And Carruthers Coastal Gardens to develop and lead classes.
Okay, this also might need to get a cost on, but maybe it's something we can do in-house, the conduit for this is actually existing, I mean, so all the hard work is already done, they just need to run cabling. From my understanding, in the past, that George had thought he was cabling for internet, but he accidentally ca- cabled the casita, so this is actually to the yellow building. Did, did IT give you an, an estimate, is that something they could do in-house?
We went out there and looked at it, the conduit, I think, in question, they're gonna have to go out there and, and verify, it's, we couldn't find it, so.
Okay, I, I can show you myself, it's, I mean, it's very, it's, it's there. I guess motion to table 5.5 until we get an estimate of cost for running internet.
Second.
Estimate and source of funding. I mean, we need to, we need to know where this is coming from. So somebody wanna amend that one?
Do I need to amend that?
So you need, I mean, that's part of the cost.
Okay, very good.
Fair thing.
All right, go ahead, second. Oh, all in favor. All opposed. Passes. 5.6, consider and take all appropriate action on any and all requests from 5013C Carruthers Coastal Garden for amending the operation and maintenance agreement previously heard by City Council on February 20th, '24. Section 8A, citizen gardening plots, section 8B, public access to community garden, section 8I, facility maintenance responsibilities, section 8I, 8L, facility utilities responsibility, and section 8R, background requirements for volunteers. We have an attachment going through all that.
Clarification, is this what the city wants from them, or they want for the city? I don't understand.
It's what they want.
It's what they want.
I thought, I thought there was already responses back and forth on these, our answers, is, are we, am I mistaken? These are ans, these are questions that Gail had about their operating agreement, is that correct?
So, the last meeting, you guys saw a draft operating agreement, I was directed to go back and work with the board, the 501 returned this document that you have in front of you right now, so this is a counter offer, and I elected to bring it back to council for each one of the counter offers.
Go ahead.
There are five items on that list, is it appropriate to go through each one of them real quickly, just a quick summary of each one? The section 8A, citizen gardening plots, I don't think anybody has an issue with that, they far exceed any suggested numbers that I've heard as far as Seabrook citizens, the majority of the, what's that? The, 75% is a number that was in there, was in the original document, and I don't think anybody at the garden doubts that, that they meet those numbers. 8B, public access to community garden. Again, if we have a combination lock to the facility, and you know everybody that goes in, why do you need to store space? We're quibbling over two-car garage, but it doesn't, that, that doesn't necessarily...
I want to go back to this one.
Compute to me.
Excuse me, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to go back to 8A, because in there, the counter is for everybody in 77586 zip code, which is El Lago, El Hardin, and also part of, part of Houston.
Pasadena.
Well, you got Pasadena, El Lago, but what I'm getting at is, the 77586, we use that for the park because our park guards, your driver's license if you're in those areas, it's gonna say Seabrook, and that's why it's allowed. My concern is, it's citizens of Seabrook within the physical city limits are paying for all this, and, you know, I was thinking, at least 85% should be dedicated to the citizens of Seabrook, they're paying for it, you know, I have nothing against anybody in El Lago or Taylor Lake, or El Hardin for that matter, but since these are folks are paying for it, shouldn't they have a, a bigger slice of the pie than 75%? It wouldn't seem to be that big a deal, because the numbers that we were presented as we were going through this thing, it, literally hundreds of people were waiting to get in there, and I, I would, I would really take issue with the fact of somebody from Seabrook saying, gee, I'd like to get a plot and say, oh, sorry, we got some folks from El Hardin that have got it, and they're saying, wait a minute, it's my tax dollars that are paying for this.
Buddy, that might be somewhat analogous to somebody wanting to walk the trails on the weekend of March 15th and 17th, when the marathon is going on and they're off limits. There's a lot of people from other wa, from other locations that use our facilities, just like we have citizens that go to League City and other places as well, from the paperwork that they have, the vast majority, and I'm not gonna put it, throw anybody under the bat, bus asking for a specific percentage, the vast majority are actually Seabrook residence.
Well, I agree, I'm just saying, the walking the trails, anybody can walk the trails, but I can walk them too, this is, if I want a plot and somebody from El Hardin has got it, I'm out for a year. And we only got 21, what, 21 gardens, 21 plots out there? 27? We have 27 plots, so, that's just my thinking, I mean, but if somebody wants a plot and can't get it, because somebody from Taylor Lake has it, I'll send them to you.
Okay, go ahead, Ron, you were talking about the other one.
The facility maintenance clause on this, I am very uncomfortable with section 8I. The, the parameters of this would have to be very specific, what we can have is, Community Gardens builds a greenhouse, and then there's maintenance to be done on the greenhouse, and they say, hey, city staff, you gotta come do this. We, we, we can't open ourselves up to, to the growth of it all, because we have budgets to maintain, and we're primarily responsible for this, so I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with 8I as far as facility maintenance. As, as far as 8L, which is the second-to-last one, the utilities, my understanding is there's no way to verify where water is going from, that all of that area is under one meter on both sides of the road, I'm not sure there is a fair and equitable thing there, I'm happy to hear, actually, that the AC is still on in the casita, because humidity will tear up those walls in three months if you turn it off. The background requirements, as we heard earlier tonight, Girl Scouts functions have their own background requirements that they're required to do apart from the city, I'm sure the same applies for Boy Scouts, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure I understand where our risk is on the back, the background requirements. In, in summary, except for facility maintenance and the responsibility for paying utilities, I don't necessarily have an issue with any of these.
Okay, I had a comment. Going back to maintenance, I think you're and I are in agreement on that. Analogy would be, maintenance on my truck would be putting air in the tires, and that's two bucks. Could also be putting a new transmission in, or a new motor in, and there's a huge difference in the expense for that, and, so I, I don't see how we can accept a, a undefined liability such as the term maintenance. And with regard to the utilities, I think we need to get some information from the city, can we measure it and define what it is? And the other thing is, what we've seen with the 501C3 that started off this big, and it's now this big, where it's gonna be, you know, going forward, it's an undefined liability. As to the background checks, yes, there are different groups that have very good, the very good procedures for protecting our minors, but there are other groups that may not. It's my understanding there've been church groups out there, I don't know who's doing what, but I know that within the Seabrook, celebration of Seabrook, I believe we do background checks for everybody that's being around minors. It's not a big burden to put that extra layer for our children, and, and for that I could not compromise. If you go to the library, they have a thing called Book Buddies, where adults will read to book, read books with children, they'll sit side by side, yes, the parents are there, but before that, whoever's doing it has gotta have a complete background check, so I, I, I just don't see why we would wanna not provide that extra layer of protection for our children.
On the maintenance, I think they're talking about who maintains it, if it's in good condition now, and in five years or whatever, who's gonna maintain it? Is it, are you trying to say the garden people have to do that, or should the city? So, I don't think there's, there would be a future expense, because it's your park, you gotta, it's the Seabrooks Park, they gotta maintain it, so that's kinda where I think they're going there. Utilities, you know, electricity and water, I've been out to Pine Gully Park, I go there all the time, last summer there was a kid and their family playing in the water off of a spigot for over an hour and 20 minutes, never turned it off, ever. That spigot was just blowing water the whole time, their kids were running back and it looked like they're having fun, but that's a lot of Seabrook water right there, so if that's all linked together, there's no way they should have to pay for that. Watering plants to grow vegetables to give to needy kids, it's probably a good thing, and then the background check, totally disagree with that, 'cause I guarantee it, Seabrook does not make everything that you do with the city, they get a background check, I guarantee it, there's no way, every function that we have, like the volunteers at the Berry Veterans Memorial on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, guaranteed didn't get a background check, and there's kids there, so, man, this is, it's like playing again, it's like, come on, this is a... They're trying to do their thing, and I think we're nitpicking that you-know-what out of them, and they're just trying to do good for the people. Yeah, I understand some things we gotta go through, but some of this stuff is ridiculous, in my opinion.
Go ahead.
I do agree with the maintenance and utilities for our park, for the city to pay for that, and again, if we, we set it up where there's a new fence, and everything is, I mean, what, I don't know what the maintenance that they could possibly have that would come up. And then the utilities, I tried to get a, a solid answer on the water and electricity, but again, the water is, issue is what I see the most cost in, and again, I, I took pictures of, there's spigots all over Pine Gully Park that are live, unlocked, you know, anybody can use them, I've been told there's slip and slides out there on the summer, you know, I mean, if we wanna get a control of the water usage, maybe we should lock those up, or they're not just free water for everybody, but denying them the water and electric is not where we need to cut.
Well, I have a question, what water is being used in the park? We don't have sprinklers out there, do we?
Uh, there's little spigots, I sent, uh...
Just some water spigots and drinking fountains, right?
Right, so there was a spigot where the fishing pier used to be, over there, you've got the restrooms, and the, the what?
Yes, multiple spigots, they just a stick coming out of the ground with the spigot, and they're near the covered picnic benches, so there's like two or three of them out there, and that's where the kid was, it's, it's that drive that you go to the left when you come into the fork, you take the left fork, and there's a little parking area down there, it's that first, you know, right as you're driving on the road, it's right to your right, there's a spigot next to it, and that's where the family was, you know, playing through the water. It was a hot day and he was playing, but, I mean, literally an hour and a half running through the water, and they didn't turn it off, ever, 'cause I was there the whole time.
Just out of, just out of curiosity, Kevin, we have valves on those, on those spigots, shut-off valves, below grade. I, I, I don't know what, what they would be for, I mean, what do, what do you use them for?
Watering fountains, drinking fountains, water spigots, for use throughout the park.
We're talking about spigots.
So that, when you pull into Pine Gully Park, there's a meter for Pine Gully Park, when you turn left to go into Carruthers, there's a meter for Carruthers, and the Community Garden is tapped off the meter that goes to Carruthers.
Okay, okay, so it's not part of the park.
Those systems are separate.
Okay, so we should...
It could be further sub-metered.
And it has, well, but it has a, we do have a smart meter on that, right?
Yes.
So we can look at that?
Correct.
And I would, I would, I would think we'd probably take a look at that, see what the water usage is for this year. And as far as the background requirements, I know that, I, I, I was a volunteer for the Boy Scouts for many years, and I had, every time I went on a trip, every time I went on Seabase, every time I went for, for some of the events, everybody that was on that trip got a background check, no matter whether you had one the week before, it was done over again, and, and I'll tell you what, it's, it's, uh, it's not a bad requirement, I mean, it's a painless requirement, it takes a few minutes, you know, what, why wouldn't we do a background check on, especially in today's world, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. There's some odd ducks out there. They're all volunteers, believe it or not. So, I would highly recommend we keep a volunteer background check. Like I said, and once, and we can do it once. I mean, you know, you don't have to be like the Boy Scouts and do it every afternoon. You know, let's keep, and we do keep records of them. That's why on Celebration Seabrook and all of those, we have those names already.
We do. So, our volunteer policy is that they're going to be working with the kids, you know, so in the Gardens case, if they get a hundred volunteers, there is going to be a cost, again, for background checks. So, they run about, you know, thirty to fifty dollars. So, we'll have to figure out where that's coming from.
Okay, let me clarify. I'm not against background checks. I get probably the most background checks of anybody in this room. The NFL, Houston Texans, I do them all the time. So, my point is, I'm not against it. I don't think they should have to pay for it. If we want it, we can pay for it. That's just my opinion.
Well, we just, earlier just voted a $5,000 budget for them for the year. I don't, you know, what exactly was that for? We're talking about items that I thought that was what this was for.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is you don't have to do a background check on a hundred and ten volunteers. It'd just be the ones that are going to be working with the minors, the children, which I would think would be just a handful. Like Tom said, if we're going to chunk up another five grand and their grants and their dues, you should be able to afford that. Or have the volunteers. If they were really interested in it, they could pay for it.
I think it should be out of that $5,000 part of the budget process. It should all be included in there if we're going to do that certain amount, five or six or seven a year.
I wonder if we're not, as my dad used to say, pole vaulting over mouse turds on this. Anytime that there's a group of kids out there, a group of kids, they will be there under the supervision of the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, or the church group that they come with. Those groups are going to have much more stringent requirements than we do. From what I understood, Gail, there's no discussion about making all the adults that go out there get a background check. So, we may just be twisting around nothing. Obviously, the requirement to have anybody who is working with kids representing the garden have a background check is appropriate, but you're talking about three or four or five people getting a background check once a year, and I bet I'm looking at four of them right now. So, I don't see this as something to hang up an agreement on just to clarify that it is required. If anybody is working with the kids, they have to have a background check.
Right, and the resolution reference that I put in here to marry up right now, again, if you have a volunteer that comes to us and wants to work the Celebration Seabrook in the Kid Zone or the Easter, we're requiring our city volunteers to do this. So, you know, I would just ask council, I mean, if we're disconnecting that, is this a private or a public? I guess I'm getting a little confused on that.
Maybe.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, Gail. The Celebration Seabrook, the volunteers are providing supervision of the kids.
It's not like a scout troop that has three people orbiting around them providing that supervision. And in this case, for the children's groups that come in, they're, most of the time, I expect, they will have the supervision from a separate organization.
Just again, for caution, council, I would just, if you're going to have possibly a restroom, chaperone is not going to be with a child all the time. So, again, it would probably behoove us to probably be more conservative on this.
Okay, so, all right, we went over all the agreement notes. Did we change any of those agreement?
Yeah.
And we need to redo them. So, we need to, so we need to, if we need to amend that operations and maintenance agreement, no, the, yeah, operations and maintenance.
Yeah, we have to come out.
We need to...
Would it be?
What do you want to do?
Obviously, item number seven is OBE. Would it be appropriate to vote on six one, six two, six three, six four, six five independently so that we can be very clear to the folks from Carruthers and the city staff what is keeping us from being able to address number seven, approval of an operations and maintenance agreement? Would that be?
Absolutely. That's fine. If you want to take them individually, that's your, up to y'all as a council. So, I have zero problem with you taking each one of these items individually.
What do you think?
That's fine. If that's what council wants to do, that council's agreement at that? Okay, wake up.
I think that would be easier to clarify that so it's not just all or nothing at the next item.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to do them one at a time. So, anyway, so, we can take all five? Well, there's seven. There's, how many sections are there?
No, there's only five.
Okay.
And...
Okay.
You mind if I run through them real quick?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. I move that we approve item six one, Section eight A, citizen gardening plots to specify a number of eighty percent of the available lots are available for Seabrook residents.
And we take the wording for the seven seven five eight six out?
Yeah. It says Seabrook residents, that speaks for itself.
Yeah, it's currently not in there. So, I mean, I think just...
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Big mistake, I was missing somewhere.
Okay. Do we vote on these individually? Is that what you want to hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
It's been moved. Second.
Second, all in favor? Passes. Go ahead, Rob.
Item six two, Section eight B, public access to the community garden. Goodness. I understand the concerns about safety and about protecting the equipment. While it pains me to do it, I will move to approve Section six oh two, Section eight B, public access to community garden to be in compliance with a combination lock to the facility that is accessible through at least two volunteer phone numbers on the gate and is accessible at the Pine Gully Garden, or Pine Gully Guard Shack.
Second.
I would like to see that it's open on the weekend and holidays. It would be open on the weekends and holidays.
Is there volunteers out there during those times?
See, I'm not for that because the community center's not, you know, open the community center on the weekend, go, well, it's the weekend. We're going to open the door. You still have to go rent that. So, and it's used, it can be used by anyone, too. So, I kind of, I don't think that's necessary, in my opinion.
I guess I'm kind of at a, again, sitting on a fence here. In one hand, I think our citizens would like to see what's going on behind the fence, but on the other hand, I don't want vandalism. I don't want the deer running around eating the tomatoes. So, it's kind of a fine line.
What if we just unlock the gate but had the gate closed and then keep the deer out? And they've got a hundred and ten volunteers. I mean, and there's a gate guard.
Yeah, but there's no time. People walk in from El Hardin into the park.
I mean, they're currently already usually, I mean, they're there a lot, and if they have access to by calling somebody and getting access, if they want to come there on the weekend and it's the right hour, then, I mean, leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I don't know how we could, other than the combination lock, I don't... I mean, let's, I think just having the combination lock is, you know, with a sign that says, I mean, I certainly wouldn't call anybody to open a gate, get the combination personally. So, why have it? I guess is my point. Nobody's going to do that. Anybody else have any feelings on this one? Do we, do we open it up or lock it up?
I think you've got to keep it locked up. That's just, I mean, as much as I don't want to either, I agree with Rob, what you're saying.
But I think vandalism and animals, you've got to keep it locked up. As long as they're going to answer the phone, we just need to test them every once in a while. Go over there at midnight, call them and say, hey, I want to get into the gate. I want, got my flashlight. I want to take a look at stuff. So...
Well, have it, you know, knowing that it's, it's, it is a 501(c)(3) and they are operating it. I mean, it's up to them whether they secure it or don't secure it. Okay, do I hear a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second to approve eight B? All in favor? Unanimous.
Section six three, Section eight I, facility maintenance responsibility. I move to table that on the condition that I will not in any way support a clause that could be interpreted to place city staff under the direction of a partner 501(c)(3). And the way this is currently written, it could do that. The city decides what needs to be maintained and when they maintain it. We can have city staff subject to people that, well, city staff is subject to Gail. Until that wording can be resolved, I move that we table facility maintenance responsibility.
Second.
Question. What happens between now and final resolution? Who's responsible for maintenance?
Not going to get done until final resolution.
Until we agree who's responsible for doing exactly what on that piece of land, like the fence and those other things, until we agree on that as a council and as a 501(c)(3), there's not a whole lot going to be happening out there that's not already going on. And they are doing good things out there right now with what a lot of people see as limitations. What we're trying to do is set the conditions for their continued success and even expansion without undue risk and problems for city staff.
I guess, I guess I'm... Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor of tabling it? All opposed? Okay. Is that it, Rob?
Ready for next?
Yeah.
The next one. Item six four, Section eight I, facility utilities responsibility.
That one's L.
It's a little L. Lowercase L. It's a lowercase L.
I should have brought my good glasses tonight. The old ones. Item six four, Section eight L, facilities utilities responsibility. Table this one as well without a clear definition of what kind of numbers we're talking about there. It's inappropriate for us as council members to assume our responsibility to pay for it, just like the Gardens can't necessarily make an assessment on whether or not they could.
Yeah. Motion in a second to table. No discussion, all in favor? I'm not really going anywhere with this. Go ahead.
Six five, Section eight R, background requirements for volunteers. The... Background requirements for volunteers. I move that it remain as is. Operators shall require any volunteer participating in activities on the property involving direct contact with youth to complete an application and background check process. That does not mean necessarily the city has to do it just that the park volunteers are responsible for verifying that it's done. It would not affect Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church groups that require background checks, but if a couple of you guys are teaching kids, then you would need to ensure you had a valid current background check.
I think a second.
So, you're saying, on the discussion part, you're saying that the city should pay for it? Or, I mean, they should pay for it?
Yes, they should pay for it.
We have a motion in a second.
Clarity is, the motion is to have this phrase remain as currently written.
Okay, as our current background check requirements.
Which, to be clear, does not say for all volunteers, only volunteers that are working with youth.
Correct. That's correct. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Passes. Okay. No, that was it. Just I've lost, I've lost my spot. I've got so many things open here.
I think considering we have certain issues that are still outstanding, it would be appropriate to table that item as well.
Okay. Six point oh, discussion. Six point one, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of Charter Review Commission for recommendations to be considered by council in 2024.
Thank you, guys.
In 2024. Now what?
Trying to clarify, did you just, unilaterally just table five point seven?
Well, that's the same thing we just discussed.
Agreed. I just think for the record, it's been tabled.
I move to table item seven.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, since we had discussed. Okay. I'll read six point one again. Discussion and possible action. It was unanimous. Six point one. Discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of the Charter Review Commission for recommendations to be considered by council in 2024.
Mayor and council, I was working with Rachel. You guys, we, I think about six months ago, when Robin was here, we started a conversation. This is a commission that's usually appointed directly by council. We didn't get any applications back from you guys. We are kind of getting to a timeline that if we're going to incorporate this with the '25 election, which would save some costs as far as election expenses, we'd like to entertain if council is targeting that. We need to get a definitive timeline that each one of you could commit to possibly getting some applications or a nominee in. This will be voted on as a whole on the charter by council. However, the importance of this, we're kind of looking for some individual appointments from council, and that's kind of how we had discussed it prior. So, we wanted to bring this back up to the attention of council that if you guys can look at the timeline, kind of commit to that, we would be able to incorporate that in '25. If there's not a commitment to that, we'd like to kind of know now. So, at our planning process, we can figure out if that's going to work for the '26 election. It's going to be quick. It's six months per the charter that the commission would meet. Again, for those of you that have not been on since this process has gone through, but the appointment would happen. We'd go quickly. but the appointment would happen, we'd go quickly into commissioning and meeting with legal counsel, and then they'll return at the end of this product, a report to council, and we'll be meeting those timelines that we'll have to call for election. So it, it comes very quickly, but I think it's about applications, April 23rd is what we're looking at. So that means by next month, all applications would need to be in. We would schedule city council at that time to make and approve those nominations and then hit the road.
How many people are in this commission?
Seven, per the charter.
In terms of time commitment?
So last time, we met once a month. There was quite a few sections, obviously the charter's long, so we had to hit quite a few sections. Could be twice a month, but at least I would say that we're committing these people to, I would say, no less than 10 meetings. Could be more.
And the meetings are how long?
Before, they ran about two hours. We, we, we gave a, kind of some house rules that said, you know, two hours, and then if it ran over, sort of like council, it was an agreeance that they would go over that time period.
2.0, discussion and possible action regarding flying the existing PVC pole American flags all year long on Main Street at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial.
So the way this came up was, I was out there and Jack Friday and his wife, Marcy, were out there with their golf cart, walking their dog. And I guess the week before the flags were up for, because this has been a while, but the flags were up for like Memorial Day or Veterans Day or whatever. And then he says, hey, why do you keep taking the flags down? I go, well, I don't, it's, it was what the city, we agreed on, the main holidays, Flag Day, you know, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, July 4th. And they're up probably approximately almost a few days before and then a week after. So almost like two weeks each time. And he goes, well, they're really pretty, we like them. And then Pete Fisher, who lives right there, his house is across from Merlyon, he just moved in, and he thought the same thing, when he first moved in, they were up. So he thought they were going to stay up. And then he asked me, oh, I see they take them down and they cap them, because he's seen the caps. So a bunch of other people asked about it too, and then at Merlyon, a bunch of people had talked to me and said, hey, that would look really good if they stayed up all the time. And I said, well, the agreement was they're up, you know, the six, seven times a year for the couple of weeks. But they're saying they would really like them all year long, just those 20. Because I've told them my other plan about having more flags up and down Main Street. They said they understand that, but they said that really draws attention to the memorial. So I said I would bring this up. And then Marcy actually wrote a letter. The other thing is, they brought up, and this was Jack, he kind of pulled me aside and he goes, see your sign right there? He keeps calling it mine, like, you know, I had nothing to do with it. But he says, that's too low, your bush is in front of it and the spotlight's on it, no one can see it. That's why, you know, and the flags are kind of behind the oak trees. When people come from a certain way, they just don't see it. So he said, if you raise that up, at least level with the brick that is where you actually sit in the circle, he said, I think people would see it a little better. Now, I know that's expensive. I think flying the flags year round wouldn't be that expensive. Because I know places to buy multiple American flags pretty cheap. I mean, you know, a quantity of them. But anyway, the point is, he brought those up, and I was like, hey, I can at least talk about it. So that would probably be a CIP to raise that, the, the cement, and we'd have to come up with a nice pillar way to do it. Maybe you do the five pillars of the, you know, the Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Space Force, and have, you know, that many pillars, like it represents that. I don't know. But that's something we can discuss in the future. But something we could do pretty quick, I think, is if we voted on flying the American flags full time, which I actually like the idea. I think that would, you know, it's just those 20, no more, but those are the 20 right in front of there, and that brings attention to that. And people have remarked that they really, really like it. By the way, the memorial looks really good, even though the freeze killed the blue in the middle, the red and the, the whites look really good. They just sprat it up and they're taller than they have been. It's crazy, that didn't kill them, but, oh, well. And, oh, one other thing, the, the last big storm we had, we had straight line winds come through, and it popped the lines on the American and Texas flag. Kevin, guys, it was on a Saturday, and Monday Kevin's guys already had it fixed. So it looked really good, they, they jumped all over that. So kudos to your guys, tell them thanks again, much, much appreciated.
So I like the idea, but I have a question though, because I'm, I'm concerned about theft and, and, you know, vandalism for them. And then also, like you said, the winds and stuff, those flags fly a lot, because that wind blows right through there. So I think their wear and tear on those flags are going to, I think, take a beating. So we'll just have to see about getting sturdier fabric on the flag.
I think if we set it at a quarterly, you know, replace the flags quarterly, so we're talking 80 flags a year. It's not, it's not bad.
I appreciate that point. One thing Kevin and I have really looked at, we've only had to replace them twice a year. We almost get, every once in a while, if we have extra storms or whatever, we've had to replace them three times a year, the, these nine existing. So I'm thinking it'd be about three times a year. Because those are a little lower, so sometimes when the, the flags 20 feet are blowing, these are kind of hanging. So, but I, but I hear you. Now, one good thing is, right there at the memorial, there's a camera to the memorial dedicated to that, and then there's a camera that can be manipulated that looks right down Main Street. I don't know a lot, but that could help on, but could there be damage? Of course. And that's where I'm trying to find, see if Saffy could help out, that Seabrook American Flag Initiative that I started, where, you know, not every time, but if, if a flag or a flagpole got damaged, we pitch in and say, hey, here's an American flag, we're going to replace it with that, and/or the pole or whatever. Because if we're flying them all the time, I could see someone pulling up on the curb and bumping a pole and bending it. But anyway.
What is, what is flag protocol when you're flying a flag at night? Aren't they supposed to be lit?
Yes, they are. And actually, there's plenty of light there, though. I, I'm.
Individually?
Technically, okay, yes and no. It can be individually, but if there's enough light, it's, it's correct. Now, here's the thing, I know what you're saying. Now, when I've been up to Washington DC, they fly a group of flags around the Washington Monument. The Washington Monument is lit up so well, it actually lights up those flags, but they're not individually lit. So I hear what you're saying. And, you know, so I think there's actually enough light there, but that's something I can, I can check a little bit more. But actually, I think there's enough light to fly them.
So, so these 20 flags would be how, it says all year long on Main Street at the memorial. So how, how far, how big of an area is that? What's the length of the area you, you want to put the flags in?
Just those 20. It's, it's like 100, not even 100 yards, it's probably about 50 to 75 yards long. But, but it's the existing. No, no, no.
Just one side?
Just that one side, right there. That focuses, that brings your eyes to the memorial. That's, everybody has talked to, I get phone calls when the flags fly about the memorial. Oh, that, that's really cool, I didn't know it was existed there. When they don't, I've rarely gotten a phone call. I have, but rare. But when they fly, I get calls about it or people talk to me about it. So that's part of what Jack Friday was talking about too.
Right, if there's enough light.
I, I, I would think that, let's find out the cost and also the, the proper lighting, so we're at least informed going ahead, instead of going out and doing something wrong and then having to fix it.
The cost of what, though?
Of how many times we replace the flags.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, each flag costs, are we talking 40 bucks a piece on those Americans?
If we get a good polyester sewn flag, it's going to last, we think we've been able to do it twice a year.
Correct. Yeah, see, so that's, that's really not too bad.
So $1,600 a year.
Yeah.
Just to have a number, I mean. Yeah, let's just get a number.
Right.
Okay. All right, and 3.0, discussion and possible action regarding raising the concrete sign at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial. We discussed it, we're going to have to get a cost on that.
Right.
With, we're still looking at moving forward with the redesigning renovations of the Main Street area. I'd be hesitant to support that until we know how it's going to fit into the whole master plan down there. What we don't want to do is spend $15,000 raising it now, and then we come back two years later and say, ah, we need to move it back five feet, have to take it down. So just making sure we know where it fits in that master plan. I understand that master plan's not complete yet, but for that one, I might be willing to defer it. The other one, flying the flags, I would support, even though we voted for $6,000 tonight out of the general fund, which isn't a lot. But if we do this every meeting, we're in big trouble by the end of the year. We.
Budget time and setting tax rates is going to be interesting.
Yeah, okay. So we, we're, we're going to table that until we get some numbers. Okay, 7.0, routine business, city manager update and report on city council, to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, State Highway 146 expansion, Port of Houston rail spur, City of Seabrook CIP projects, economic development updates, and any City of Seabrook grant administration projects.
Mayor and council.
That's, you said you weren't going to use that picture. That's what I, that's what I told her, she, she said, can I use this?
I, I'm trying to keep up with articles on the road.
What's that green thing on my butt?
I heard from.
It was windy that day.
It was windy that day. I heard from a resident today that there might be a news article that I haven't found yet, the, the 15th. Has anybody, okay, I don't know if that's a social media article, so I was trying to chase that down to see if that was actually, they have not contacted us, TechSaw has not contacted us. So what I sent you as far as early March, that is still the last communication that I've had. Well, they're contacting us, we haven't had anything formal since last week, or whatever I sent you the email, so.
They don't know.
Because we're waiting on power.
That's the rumor, that's, that's not even true.
We had some questions from Open Space, I sent you a supplemental email on this, but the 146 project in relation to the Green Ribbon Landscaping Grant, we did take a peek over at the letting portal with TechSaw, so that did go out for bids on, in March, in the letting schedule. So that is approximately a $1.3 million landscaping project that is going under contract review. I stuck our concept design in here, and this previous picture here is actual, from our landscape architect. So they've kind of done a little bit of a 3D rendering here as opposed to the line drawing that was submitted. So biggest one that we're going to see is right here under NASA Road 1. Again, when we, many years ago, we've talked about this, just to bring you guys up to speed, these diagonal lines, there's two tones of big rock or riprap rock that are going to go inside and underneath the over, underpasses. And then between the bridge sets, they believe there's enough with certain species to get some landscaping beds in between those bridge sets. So there'll be an elevated landscaping bed in there. As a reminder, 146 TechSaw on the north side, there's still a lot of activity going on out there. If you've seen, they've started pouring for the additional lanes on both the northbound and the southbound across Red Bluff. Again, we're trying to keep in contact with that project lead, not as good a communication as we were on the main project. And just as a recap, as this is progressing, hopefully we'll get a better heads up or timeline, but there will be a lot of activity on those entrance ramps as they reconfigure those on the north. In addition, with this project, they'll be converting some of the frontage roads that's closer over by Port, and you can start to kind of see how that's going to lay out. And then probably most impactful for us is that Taylor Lake crossing. So there'll be substantial bridge work rebuilt over Taylor Lake. So all that to say, this project, still at the north side, we've got a lot more that will impact us right around that Red Bluff intersection. And this is also the project that I've been telling you guys, they are going to work in that dilapidated intersection. So we'll still try to get some time, estimated time line when that intersection's going to be closed and, and remodeled. Commission and board updates, we've got Open Space and Trails Committee that is going to be meeting this week on the 7th. We had a great meeting on the Economic Development Corporation side. I think everybody was in attendance, most everybody was in attendance. We had EDC, P&amp;Z, and EDC that was all there, and knocked out some, I think, some really good points. Everybody talked very frankly. And I think after some of the boards left and EDC was left, they had some even harder conversations, but I believe they've knocked out some, some really good goals. They'll be bringing that after they approve it back to this board for acceptance. P&amp;Z's next meeting is March 21st. And then, no activity on the civil service, that's actually from your last update. CIP, this is the latest aerial picture out there on the pole of public work. So last week, or the last council meeting, it was framed up, so you can see now that the concrete's going in. And Public Affairs is reminding me, as we are getting our checklist together, and hopefully it's on your calendar, next Thursday will be the ribbon cutting on the 14th. Centers Point substation, if you've been out in this area, the privacy wall's going up. For the most part, there's only a small section now that's left. Spoke with the sound folks that you guys previously approved the ambient sound reading, and those will probably be going up, I'll get a confirmed timeline, but those sound meters will be going up late next week. So we'll get an ambient reading in this area as well as off Red Bluff. And that concludes my update, so any questions?
Any questions, council?
Have we had, have we had any comments from the folks in Red Oak since the wall's been up?
I have not gotten anything in the last probably six days.
Okay.
Jackie.
Real quick, going back to the Charter Review Committee, you said there's seven, I've never been a part of that. So is it, it's either us or we appoint somebody, or how's that work?
Council of points.
Points. We, but it's us.
No, you, you, the whole purpose of the Charter Review Committee or commission is to get members of the public to, to look at it, an unbiased, objective recommendation. Ultimately, you'll be the ones who approve what goes on the ballot, if anything. But the purpose is to get members of your.
So we're like, we're each kind of in charge of finding one person?
Right.
Okay.
Everybody comes up with two names, it'd be great.
Gotcha, okay.
And there is still on the website, like with all the other boards and commission on that page, there's still an application, electronic application there. So if you will direct your nominee to that place, have them fill it out, then Rachel will get them, and then it'll come back to you as a body for appointment, but.
Okay, gotcha.
One of the things we've looked for in the past with Charter is somebody at least that's been in the city for a while.
Yeah.
Because it, it's tough, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a long document, and you have to have some understanding of city.
Right, right.
And how it's run.
And then also, when do you think we'll get the pool bids back? Will it be before the next meeting?
The assessment?
Yeah.
The assessment report?
Sorry, Kevin.
We're going to have Kevin.
Brian just checked it with them yesterday and told them that they're still working on it, still a review of it. Don't really have anything just yet, but they're aware that we have another meeting in a couple of weeks, so see what they can get us by then.
Okay, okay. And then a couple, thank you. And then a couple things for the next meeting I'd just like to ask. I'd like, after being at the EDC joint meeting last week, I really strongly feel that the EDC director position deserves a first full-time person dedicated to the city's economic development. So I'd like to discuss that with council to put that position back into place. And then also to discuss modifying the current agreement with the barge. There's three little highlights, if you want me to, to tell you what they are now. One is to, to allow them to have ticketed events, not just for music, but for other things. And then two, for the non-property charity events, that not be counted against their special events permits. We've discussed. We've discussed this before, I just want to, it's coming back around.
So would this just be for that business, nobody else?
Say that again?
She's asking if you wanted to apply to that solely to that business or all other like-kind businesses?
Do we have any other businesses like that? That we have an agreement with?
So for the special event permit, that would be exempting one business and, no, but...
Well, isn't that, that business, the only business we have a maximum allowable permitting?
No, 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 it's tied to the ordinance. If someone wanted to get and have a concert on their grounds that's going to bring in a lot of traffic, then that would apply for everyone. It's tied back to the special events ordinance.
We currently have like four per each business for all of the businesses, is that allowable?
It, so the ordinance right now, by our interpretation of it, is it's special. So if the business or the individuals wanting to have, for instance, a concert back to back to back to back, what we landed on was, are, is that special anymore? So we had to define based on, it takes about 45 days to turn these applications over, so we deferred, it's, if it's special, it's probably going to be for us to process an application about four a year, is how we came up with that number.
Okay, well, I'm just talking about the nonprofit, like for Outlaw Challenge, that doesn't go against their special events. But there's some other nonprofits that are coming up that is being used for their special events.
Right.
I thought that we had had, there was some discussion there where they, they wouldn't have to do that.
I think we should probably put this on the next agenda.
Okay, and then basically, it's about special permitting, so just, I want to put that back on the agenda, please, and that's it?
Anybody else? Establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and Council, your next meeting is scheduled for March 19th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. It's 8:31, we're adjourned.